Hey, everyone. Call to order. Meeting for Johnson County Council, December fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Roll call, please. Anybody here from the owner?
Uh, Pam Burton.
President.
John Mallers.
Here.
Ron Dear.
Here.
Jonathan T. Myers.
Here.
Alinda Griesmer.
Here.
John Myers.
President.
And John Dittner is just absent.
Counselor Burton, would you give us the invocation, please?
Yes. Your heavenly father, we come before you to seek your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions that will impact our community. We pray for your presence to be with us during this meeting and ask that you guide our thoughts, our words, and our actions. We pray for the leaders of our community, that you would grant them wisdom, discernment, and integrity as they lead. Help us to make decisions that will honor you and benefit all of those who we serve. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Please stand your feet through the pledge of the reasons.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next step on is the approval of tonight's agenda. And do I need to make some changes here? Okay. So I guess on the appointments, we're going to table the Greenwood City Economic Development until January. I'm sorry, I've lost my notes. Help me out here.
Yeah.
Now, what's one of the other corrections? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, we're going to table that until the January meeting, the approval of the budgetary meeting. Anything else that I missed? Right, it's time to take public comments, limited to five minutes per person. Do I have any comments from the public at this point in time? Seeing or hearing none, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is, yes. Yes. Uh, no, we haven't. Hold on. All right. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended and presented.
Second. Motion, second by Myers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay, motion carries. Right. Now moving forward to public comments. You have any public comments at this point in time? All right, seeing or hearing none, we'll move on to appointments. The first up on the appointments is the Peta Bowel Board, Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. And at this time, we have two applicants, Donna Zellner and Nicholas Clark.
Evening. Mike Watkins, county assessor and secretary of the Peta Bowel Board. I have heard that there are two applicants for the position open tonight. I have submitted to the board my recommendation of Donna Zellner to be renewed on the, uh, the board. She's been on the board for, I think, thirteen years. She was township assessor for Pleasant Township for a really long time. She's been a realtor. She knows the business and she's good at it. The other person, I, I do not know them.
All right. Thank you. Is either applicant here?
Donna is here tonight, yes.
Would you like to speak, Donna?
Um, I've enjoyed being on the, serving the board for the thirteen years, and I would like to continue if you see fit.
And you meet all of the requirements for level two or?
Yes, I'm a level two and everything's current.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to speak up and say that I've personally worked with Donna on this board, and I highly recommend her and the position and the things that she does.
Thank you. Right. Is Nicholas White here? Right? Hearing or seeing none from Mr. White. Well, entertain a motion.
I'll make the first motion to approve Donna Zellner to the twenty twenty-four board.
Second.
Motion by Griesmer, second by Myers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, we need to approve the rate of compensation for twenty twenty-four. So I'll need a motion from council on that.
Make a motion to approve rate of compensation for twenty twenty-four. Uh, three hundred fifty per day for each member of certified two level or three, uh, process or praiser designation, a hundred dollars per day for each day for members without certified level two or three level assessor praiser designation. Uh, is the second one necessary since we don't have that?
Mm-hmm.
You might as well do it just in case we have to fill up.
Okay.
See midstream.
All right, so move.
Motion by Dear. Second, second by Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next up is the Johnson County Redevelopment Commission. And upon that board, our current appointments are Rob Henderson and Lee Money. And then we have an additional applicant of Terry Myers. So anyone want to speak?
Hi, good evening, council. My name's Rob Henderson. You're current president. Johnson County Redevelopment Commission reside in Franklin, Indiana, Needham Township, and I would appreciate consideration for reappointment as your reappointment to the board, to the commission in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Rob.
Good evening. I'm Lee Money. I've had the opportunity to serve on this board through two different appointments. The opportunity to serve in the Greenwood Redevelopment Commission for over fifteen years, most of that time as its president. I, I enjoy the opportunity to serve on the Redevelopment Commission. There are lots of details within that commission that go on, lots of recall needed from time to time, from past, from past meeting and past activities and knowledge of plans and the works. And, uh, it's a great honor to serve the, my county on the Redevelopment Commission. I appreciate your consideration for reappointment.
Thank you, Mr. Money. I'm Terry Myers.
I'm Terry Myers. Uh, I am retired. Uh, spent most of my life in public service, so I've been looking for something to I can do that would help out the community. And what better than the Redevelopment Commission? I think I've, you know, had a lot of experience in these kind of matters, so I would certainly approve your support. And just as a side, the name's Myers, but I'm not related to anybody.
These two guys are here.
Well, in Johnson County, that's like being a Smith.
Thank, thank goodness your name is not John Myers.
I appreciate your, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
And I, I really like your last name. Thank you all. All right, so board, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve our current two, uh, constituents or persons serving on it and, uh, also make a comment to the additional applicants for any position. Simply because you might have chosen tonight doesn't mean you shouldn't uh, reapply for anything you might be considered for.
I'll second, uh, with the, everything that's going on with sixty-nine and their knowledge, being on the board, what's they've been working on, bringing somebody new in it, and at this time, I think would be a mistake. So I support Ron's motion. Anybody else have any additional comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, I have have a motion by, was it, I'm sorry, was it? And Mr. Myers was second.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries for Rob Henderson and Lee Money. And Mr. Myers, please keep trying. There are lots of other boards and and opportunities for you, for your public service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, next up is the economic, or I'm sorry, the Edinburgh Town Economic Development Commission. Kevin, you're up, if you'd like to speak.
Thank you. I became the town manager of Edinburgh in the middle of June. My predecessor, Wade Watson, is going to be retiring into this year. Uh, so I'm stepping up to be the representative for the Edinburgh Town Economic Development Commission, if you so desire. I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. McGinnis?
I've known this gentleman since he had black hair. Very fine public servant and, uh, I, I will be in support of his nomination.
Kevin, I will hold that against you. Was that a motion?
Yes, that was a motion.
Second motion, dear, second Myers. Any further discussion? Can't get any more, Kevin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your public service. Good to see you, Kevin. All right, so we're tabling the Greenwood City Economic Development Commission until January. Next up would be the Local Alcoholic Beverage Commission Board. And those applicants are David Mauer and William Baldwin. Mr. Mauer? Mr. Baldwin?
I would like, I'm, uh, my video is not working, so, or you're not, I need to be admitted into the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll get to him next. I'm sorry. All right, so this is Mr. Baldwin.
Is he here?
He's online. He's, uh, on Zoom.
Let him go first. I got nothing to do all day today.
So, uh, Mr. Mauer, are you online, sir?
I am online. I'm my, I want to make sure my video, I need to be, my video needs to be.
We're waiting, and, uh, we've got a little patience, so if you would, uh, unmute your mic and.
I'm on, uh, my mic is unmuted. My mic is unmuted.
It was.
I do not.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, if you would, Mr. Baldwin, if you could come up, please, and go first, then perhaps Mr. Mauer, come online.
My name's Bill Baldwin. I've lived in Greenwood, uh, most of my life. I married a girl from Greenwood, went to Southwood High School. Uh, did step in the army, uh, worked for, uh, Indiana Bell thirty-two years, retired, worked for Johnson County Sheriff's Department, eleven years, retired from them in oh-six. Uh, was on the Greenwood Police and Marathon Board. And that was my first touch with public service as far as on boards. And, uh, I was kind of at a loss as to what, what, why I'm here tonight, but I found that out, so forth, but, uh, I'm available, I don't have anything to do, and, uh, I think I can do that job. I don't know because I'm not sure what to do. So there's where I'm at. And, uh, if, if, and I'm not running against the other gentleman, if he wants to say, he can stay, as far as I'm concerned, so. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, sir. Do we have, uh, David Mauer up yet?
I am waiting. Can you hear me?
So we'll move on, uh, here and, uh, open it up for discussion, leave it open for, uh, Mr. Mauer to come in if he comes in. Anybody have anything they'd like to add or, uh, discuss this time?
We did, we did receive an application for Mr. Mauer, correct?
Yeah, he's been on the board for over five years.
He has points for the three appointed, if possible. He did have another meeting. He had to step out to join the meetings.
I, I mean, we have his application, we suggest, I'd suggest that we receive with this one.
Set a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve David Mauer, local alcoholic beverage commission, uh, with his past experience.
Motion, dear. Have a second.
I'll second.
Second by John Mallers. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Hearing done, motion carries for David Mauer. And sir, same goes for you, no, same for you also. Please stay involved and, uh, keep purging, and if we have anything come up, we'll give you a call.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so Board of Zoning Appeals. Alternate. Applicant is Roger Meyer. Mr. Meyer? Would you come up, please? Introduce yourself and so want to welcome you to the podium. For Board of Zoning Appeals, alternate.
Correct. Name is Roger Meyer. I've resided in Johnson County for about thirty-five years now. And, uh, I see a lot of opportunities and most of them are going to other counties. Now, I just like to maybe try to change that around some.
Good for you.
So my question is, is this, you said alternate, is this, are we, is this for an alternate position in keeping poll? Or what do you mean by that?
Oh, it's just in case someone's not there, he's the alternate that comes in to vote, he's voting member.
Oh.
So the, the existing alternate, Paul Claudfelder, did he give an application or did he not desire to go forward?
So your main appointment, Stephen Powell, his term is four-year term, and ends twelve thirty-one twenty-four. And each year, you have an alternate to him. Stephen Powell did not recently, I'm sorry, Paul Claudfelder did not recently.
Okay.
And Michelle, actually, uh, I talked to Michelle in zoning today, and she was fine. If, if you choose, um, a new member that everybody is eligible and she's fine with that, with the experience and stuff.
That's good to know.
I'll go ahead and, and make a first motion for Roger Meyer for the Board of Zoning Appeals alternate.
Motion, Griesmer, second by Myers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Uh, hi, Board of Health.
Bethy Swearingen, Director of the Health Department. Um, we're here, I'm here today with Amanda Stevenson Holmes to ask for her appointment. Um, this is the first opportunity. You guys have had to appoint someone to, um, the Johnson County Board of Health. I, that's because of Senate Bill Four, correct? And so it's new.
Right.
She is currently a, currently a board member and has been for the past three years, so we would really like to keep her in that position. This meets all the criteria.
All right.
And she is here today.
Would you like to come up and speak?
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for your service to our county. Amanda Stevenson Holmes, I've been a member of the Board of Health for three years. I have been honored to serve our county in this capacity. I show up, I listen, I ask questions, I am engaged. I'd be honored to continue my service to the county and to the board, and to the Department of Health. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
I'm, I'll make the first motion for Amanda Stevenson Holmes to the Board of Health. I, uh, had a chance to meet her, what was it, three years ago?
Yes.
Yes, I know she lives the community and will serve well.
Motion by Griesmer. Second, second by Myers.
I'd like clarification from the attorneys, uh, on our notes. It has, um, current appointment by the commissioners and it's now our appointment. If you could clarify that for us, please.
Yeah, so the commissioner's appointed her under the previous law, so when the Senate Assembly changed the law, this, her appointment, her seat, if you will, went from commissioners to this body, so.
We won't hold that against you.
So that's all that is. I think it's just saying currently she's already on the board via for a commissioner appointment, but that, that seat is now shifted to this body to the, to do the appointment.
And for consistency, you want to change your last name to Myers?
Yeah, thank you for your service.
I, just a question, does that, does the four-year appointments start in January? So we start the four years then? Is that how that works? Or do we pick up from where we were?
So to be clear, it is unclear. The way in which the statute was written.
Okay.
Um, we can have a further conversation with, with Paul. I, I feel like what we had discussed from the board's standpoint was that this would be just a new appointment for four years looking forward.
For four years, okay, that would be lovely, that that would be easier for record-keeping purposes if we could do that.
I think so. This is technically, technically a new position to be filled by private councils, so to me, it makes sense to have it be four years starting from, you know, January one.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, we had a motion in a second?
Yes.
We did.
Any further discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up is County Plan Commission Council Member is the appointment, and I'm currently the appointment for the County Plan Commission, and I'd like to continue on that. Um, but certainly if anybody else is nominated, wants to step up, in the voter force. Please do so. Now entertaining motion.
I'll nominate Jonathan Taylor Myers to stay on as county plan and commission.
Second.
Motion, Myers, second, dear. Any further discussion? Speak now or forever hold. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
No, thank you. County Plan Commission, alternate. Currently held by Counselor Dear, correct?
It's one of the toughest, toughest that I've ever done since I didn't attend one meeting, because John was faithfully there at all meetings. Um, I would continue to be interested, but, uh, if anyone else is interested, I'd step back.
Well, nominate, um, Ron Dear. As County Plan Commission alternate.
Second.
Motion by Griesmer, second by Myers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next is Emergency Management Advisory Council is current council member, and I think that's also.
Yeah, it's like, I've, uh, I've, I've been on for, I believe, two years now. Um, it is one of the most active, uh, advisory councils that I enjoy being on and, uh, uh, I feel I've done an adequate job representing the council, but, uh, if someone else is interested, I would step back.
I'll nominate Ron Dear to return back to Emergency Management Advisory Council.
Motion by Griesmer. Second, second by Myers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Congratulations, you're on.
Congratulations.
Sure.
Next up is Solid Waste Management District, and I believe that's Counselor Myers.
No.
No? Is it Dittner? Okay.
Does he want to do that again?
Yeah, I did. Okay.
I think he did.
Well, he's not here, so I'll nominate him.
I'll second that.
I like the spirit.
Motion by Burton, second by Myers. Any further discussion? On the nomination of John Dittner? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Sorry, John.
Game of cricket, process is great.
Motion carries. All right, next item up on the agenda is Routine Matters, or several items on here, and these are just, uh, routine items, which are staff reordering, and then additional appropriations, reductions, or transfers, so they're, um, quite numerous on this, but, uh, I think the net result is close to zero. So I'll entertain a motion for, for, and any one of these items can be removed from the consent agenda, so desired by any council. So I think I look here. And it's through item sixteen, so this is, uh, C-one through item C-sixteen.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda.
Motion by Griesmer.
Second.
Second by Myers. Any further discussion? All those approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. All right, next item up on the regular agenda. Item D-one is the Community Corrections Adult Grant. And, uh, number ninety-one fifty-two.
Hi, Steve Kromod, Assistant Director of Johnson County Community Corrections. This is just our, uh, annual DOC grant. Um, so this will take care of our twenty twenty-four, uh, salaries that are paid out of this grant for the year.
So as this is a grant, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion approved by Meyer, second by Burton. Any further discussion? And this is a DOC grant that goes from January one, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Steve. Thanks, you're way ahead of me.
Sorry.
Takes me a while. Hi, Sheena.
Hi, Sheena Johnson, Court Administrator.
So that's, uh, fund number eighty-two fifty-two we're looking at?
Yes, that is the, uh, VJA grant, that four-year, seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. Um, I was here a couple times this year, April and October, I think, to request approval of those positions. We're asking for those to be funded for next year as well.
Do, do these, uh, annual salaries and biweekly pays need to be noted on this motion, or can it?
I mean, do they have to be listed individually or can we do it all once? Oh, as presented.
As presented, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented. Um, the pro, the program ma, programs manager, field officer one, field officer two, field officer three. Okay. What?
Wrong one.
Not here.
Number two.
Next page.
Oh.
Just item number two, the drug court.
The drug court, I don't have to read it. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve drug court adult twenty-two, number eighty-two fifty-two.
Motion by.
As presented, yeah.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here for the next one, too.
Really?
Well, they're here, too. We're all here. For you.
I was looking at them. I was so hopeful to hear them speak.
I'm sure they'd love to. They have a lot more experience.
It's good to see you both, though. My heroes.
Okay, sorry. Um, so, uh, the three CIT members and I collaborated to, uh, write for a grant for, um, Crisis Intervention Team Program Therapist, um, some office supplies, and then some travel and training for the International Conference, and we were awarded that money. Um, we learned about it on November second. That's when we got our award letter, but technically there's kind of a weird um, grant period. So it goes from October first, twenty twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So we're asking for the salary for this new position and then the office supplies and travel and training to be funded for twenty twenty-four out of this grant fund.
Yeah, it's such a such a good thing to hear that the program therapist is onboard now. That's great news.
So that was separate from the ARPA funding, correct?
Okay.
Yeah. It's a federal grant.
Any other uh, questions or discussion? I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item number three, Crisis Intervention Team, number eighty-nine fifty-six as presented.
Motion by Burton.
Second.
Second by Myers. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm back.
You're back.
Betsy Swerogen, Director, Health Department.
I bet you. So this is fund number eighty-two forty-seven, correct?
Yes, this is my, yeah, my crisis coag uh, school grant. Um, it's just to appropriate Shannon's uh, salary for next year and uh, to appropriate things into various line items. FICA, PERF, um, health insurance, overtime, office supplies.
And this is also a grant?
It is a grant.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented Crisis Ag School twenty-one, twenty-two, number eighty-two forty-seven, as presented.
Motion by Greece.
Second.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Second Myers. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those approval, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. Now we get into the good stuff. All right, this next one is approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash nine. This is a resolution transferring unspent funds from the county elected officials' travel and training fund, number one, two, one, seven. The Johnson County Recorder, uh, Recorder's Record Perpetuation Fund, number eleven eighty-nine. And it's Teresa here or?
Yep. Okay, it's from Johnson County Recorder. Um, Tiffany helped write or wrote the resolution. Thank you for your help, Amy. Um, it's just a one-time uh, Senate bill that allows the money staying out there to be tr- can't be used for anything other than um, the approved elected officials' training. Um, the reason it got so high is the number of recordings in a two and a half year period. Uh, we get a dollar each recording that increased so much. So many sitting out there. There's lots of money left. We're setting aside what's left in the twenty-three appropriation and what was appropriated for twenty twenty-four. And um, we'll continue to collect that fund every month. So I feel like it's um, healthy fund. And this will add money back to the Recorder's perpetuation that's um, funds the Recorder's um, office one hundred percent. So if you have any questions?
And this was something that came into effect July one, right, from the state senate?
This year, state senate bill.
And I think it's like this year. Putting all this back up in together. It's very helpful. Um, so when we're doing this resolution, is do we consider this as a first reading and then?
It's just a resolution, so um, we don't need two readings on this one. And I believe this particular statute expires at the end of this year, so it either happens at this meeting or it doesn't happen after a special meeting before the end of the.
So we just entertain a motion right now.
For for this one, correct.
Okay.
And I said one question on that, that this has always been mixed around over the years. This covers AIC, council, any kind of meetings that the council would go to training. Councils included in that.
Council was added in twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Um, it's in the other five offices, the clerk, treasurer, um, recorder, surveyor. And there's those offices. It's always covered those. Council was added this year.
Was added to it where it didn't exist before.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, your legislature did that for you. So you're.
Yeah.
Adam, is it just stakehold meetings or is it?
No, it's also the.
Okay.
Includes members of your um, staff too.
I think unfortunately, the only person that elected official doesn't apply is the assessor, I think, for whatever reason, the dress simply is.
Yeah, we talked about that. Um, it's like, for instance, county council, your association lobbied for it to get added. So any time your association wants to lobby for it.
Well, our meetings are very beneficial. I mean, they're very educational, so been to several and uh, I don't know what I've done without them. So it's very, very helpful. I'm glad the legislature did it. So entertaining the motion here. Or did I already?
Thank you. Asked for one, but we haven't.
Yeah, I asked a question, so you don't have a motion.
Well, entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution twenty-three or twenty twenty-three dash zero nine as presented. Motion by Myers.
Second.
Second by Mahlers. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the approval of the interlocal agreement with the town of Bargersville concerning road maintenance. And but I have the attorneys talk to us a little bit on this.
Uh, yes, what, Luke, you wanna?
For Luke, yeah.
For Luke?
I live.
Luke didn't get to talk this morning at the commissioners meeting, so I think we all.
I'm gonna take it out on you, unfortunately. Luke Maston, Highway Supervisor. Yes, this is uh, essentially a renewal of our interlocal agreement with the town of Bargersville concerning the main roads, the main county roads within the town's jurisdiction. Uh, as we have back to about two thousand and ten or so, those can- those roads are on the county's inventory. The county handles maintenance of those roads and receives the state revenue for them in the process.
Okay. As usual, I always like collaborations and agreements, interlocal agreements. So I think they're good things when communities cooperate with each other. And with it, thank you for all the work that you do. I know this is hard work for you.
There was one slight change in paragraph eight from what was emailed out last week. Um, Bargersville has sought to have quarterly meetings with our highway engineer. Um, they've since last week have agreed to just have it be bi-annual meetings. So that language change is highlighted in paragraph eight of your physical copies in front of you. That's the only change from what was emailed to you guys last week.
Do we need to annotate that or anything? Or just can we just approve it as presented?
You can approve it uh, as presented, because I've given the clean copy to maybe I'd like to email it to you. I get it for you.
I have one. You have mine. All right. So I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three with the town of Burger.
Motion by Dear.
Second.
Second by Myers. Any further discussion or anything you want to add some further attorneys? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Luke.
I'll stay for the next one.
All right. We're not a bridge, are you? You're a bridge tonight?
I am.
So the next item is approval of an interlocal agreement with the city of Greenwood concerning Bridge six oh five. And uh, once again, all the things Carrie that were mentioned with uh, Bargersville. But can you enlighten us a little bit?
Yes, so Bridge six oh five is located on Fry Road, just west of State Road one thirty-five. This is a project, a federal aid project that the county had applied for federal funding for and started development of prior to the elimination of the cumulative bridge fund. Uh, the goal of this interlocal would be to, for the county to see that project completed. Um, the county had uh, saved the money needed to fund construction, the local construction cost for this project already. So since the county had started the project, uh, we offered to finish it with that funding.
So indeed, it's a collaborative.
Yes.
I'll make a a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with the city of Greenwood concerning Bridge six oh five.
Motion by Greece.
Second.
Second by Myers. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to stick around for the next one, too? I wanted to help him out. Next one is approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh eight, an ordinance of the Johnson County Council regarding a transfer of appropriation by White River Township Fire Production District.
I am not Luke Maston Tall, so I will adjust this.
And you're not.
Jeremy Pell, Chief of the White River Township Fire Department, and this is Ben Reiger, who is our accountant. And we were within our budget this year and we were under budget in personnel, although we had some unexpected expenses. So we're asking to transfer funds from our personnel category to our supplies and our services. And the primary reason for that is the personal protective equipment for the recruit class that we hired this year. And then we had some major repairs to our vehicles. One, the main one that had the biggest impact was putting a completely new motor in our ladder truck. We were able to get Cummins to take responsibility for part of it, and we were able to get them to put a five-year warranty on it, which will extend the life of that vehicle. We think it'll extend it seven years. So uh, taxpayers are going to get some value out of, out of that repair.
Well, certainly. So you're, you're taking money from wages full-time to vehicle maintenance and then from wages full-time to uniforms. And seventy-five thousand dollars in each.
Correct.
And then uh, could I hear your accountant?
Yeah.
Talk a little bit. Are you healthy?
I'm healthy, yeah.
And wise.
Thank you.
All right. So do we have any questions? Right. Entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. Transfer of funds of fiber fire.
Motion by Myers.
Township Fire Department Production.
I'll second.
Second by John Mahlers. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Merry Christmas to you all. And we have Santa Claus up there. All right. Um, next approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh nine. Now, you might be confused as I was. This is not resolution. We we went through resolution up above another business. This is an ordinance. So approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh nine and ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh six, which is a twenty twenty-four annual salary. Do we have anybody here to address this?
So this kind of came about, uh, Amy and I had talked, there were some specials specialization pay, special teams pay, and shift differential pay that have already been approved by this body during the budget process, but it was done so on a specific line item within the approved budget. Uh, these really should have been pulled out and attached to the exhibit C. So this ordinance is really just to clean that up, add these exhibit C for the overall salary ordinance. But this is not additional appropriation. It's not a change to anything that this body's already done. We're just kind of a little bit of a housekeeping here before the end of the year.
Okay. Anybody have any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh nine and ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh six for the twenty twenty-four annual salary as presented.
Motion by Burton.
Second.
Second by Myers. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten.
This is another piece of housekeeping. Uh, this regards the the transfer we committed actions that that grant that you guys took action uh, last month. Uh, in our infinite wisdom, we put December thirty-first to be the date that that gets done on and we're closed that day. So uh, to make sure the claims get processed correctly with the commissioners on a timing, uh, this is just gonna move that transaction date up, for lack of a better word, up to December twentieth. Um, since people will be here on December twentieth and not have to come in on a off day.
All right. Any additional discussion or questions? Hearing none. Well, entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten as presented.
Motion by Myers.
Second.
Second by Burton. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries for resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten. All right, on to the next. And final, uh, the inspection of current rules of Johnson County Council or attorneys. I worked really hard on this and uh, I think they are very clear in what they amended this to. Uh, if anybody needs further time to study this, we uh, feel like it ought to move on to January.
I I guess I I just wanted to make some comments.
Go ahead.
Um, as a council, I kind of, I mean, we've, we've got department heads that come up here and ask for money for their department so they can stay on top of the latest technology so they can work efficiently. Um, and as a council, we usually support them. Um, but what I see as a council collectively, all of us, I don't really feel like we are progressively staying on top of the latest. Um, as, and I'll just give you an example, um, I spoke with Amy before the meeting about how she does the minutes of the meetings and she confirmed that she or her assistant actually views the meetings again and makes notes and summarizes the meetings. But I know that there are programs out there. I don't think, personally, in my opinion, I don't think they should have to do that kind of work. There are programs out there that can transcribe and make their that job easier. Um, and I. And I. I, I feel as a council, we're not very progressive and in fact, we're pretty old school. Um, and that's a little concerning to me, um, John T., uh, you frequently call me kiddo. Um, I think I'm probably the young, I'm not young by any means. I'm not young, but I think I'm probably the youngest one up here, um, and. I'm still not young, so eventually what's going to happen. Is that we're gonna be. At some point in time or another, we're going to get some people up here serving on the county council who are of the younger generations, maybe millennial, Gen Z. And they're going to look at these rules and. Say it's old school too. And if I think it's old school, it's definitely going to be old school to them. Um, and I think it's also a distraction to getting people to serve in this capacity. Um, it was James Eisen, I think it was last year, who said that. Oftentimes we have a hard time finding people to fill these positions. And when we make the county council rules more restrictive. Uh, we're actually discouraging people from running for these positions. And that's kind of concerning too, because we want people to be involved civically, but not everybody. All it takes is one chronic illness. And they, you're already, um, you know, a chronic illness where they can't zoom in more than two times and you're already. Saying that they have no vote to participate. And I kind of feel like it's more important to have people participate, even if it means that they're at home sick. And they're on their third or fourth meeting, I think that. I mean, if we have somebody who's. Run for office, I, I think I see, I think it really sets a bad precedence for the future because we want people to run. And there could be somebody who ends up. In the future, holding a position like this that has to go. Live in a skilled nursing facility or they're, they become homebound. And you're saying by these rules that they cannot. Zoom in more than two times.
There's an exception for illness or a medical condition to allow them, those types of scenarios for them to continue to zoom out.
Okay, well, I still think that two times is pretty old school. And I think the future generations would agree with me on that, I mean, these are the people who. Did school year round during COVID by Zoom. I don't see anything wrong with it and it doesn't bother me if other people do it. So I guess it's why I think it's old school, because this is technology and we use it all the time now. Maybe not everybody up here does, but people who, who are working have to. So I'm saying. That's way too restrictive.
Hey, any other discussion?
Are we taking a vote on something tonight? We're just giving an opinion, we're just.
This is just discussion at this point in time.
I don't know why we, we, I mean, I don't know why we keep kicking this can down the road.
I don't either, I've read the document thoroughly and, Melinda, I certainly understand what you're saying and I've read the exceptions. And I support the document one hundred percent, so that's just my two cents. And I do know technology and I, I probably one of the oldest ones up there.
No, no, I, I claim that victory. Well, I, I supportive of the document as presented. Uh, the, the point has been made in the past, I, I am particularly one of those that have the, the medical challenge. Uh, and even with my medical challenges with dialysis and being in the hospital for twenty days in the last two years. I was able to attend, uh, only miss only one meeting and I attended that by Zoom and that was January of last year. When I just the day after I got out of the hospital, but the illness provides that alternative. Uh, I believe comments have been made that if you make the commitment to serve, uh, except for those extraordinary circumstances. Uh, I think this document very clearly states, uh, the opportunity for the, the participa- participation and the exceptions for. Um, budgets and all those others that were exceeded are, are may expressed and, uh, I'm supportive of the document as submitted.
I agree with Ron, um, I mean, we have a schedule of meetings, it's a, a year in advance, so you know when those meetings are coming out and honestly. If I'm going to vote on things that are going to affect taxpayers, if the taxpayers are out there, I need to be here so they can talk to me, they've got a problem.
I agree with. John Mallards and everything, um. I think the only exception should be if there's a county emergency or a state emergency, if we expect or require a IT to be here. Or our secretary or attorneys. They can't zoom in, they can't say, I don't feel good, I'm going to zoom in and run a meeting from there. If we expect them to be here, we should be here. We should not be allowed to zoom in unless it's an emergency, county emergency or state emergency.
There is one, there is one port of, of, of the recommendation and I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it just now when you give us the written copy. The twenty-four advance notice was for those. Uh, was that still in there?
I don't think we took that out.
I think.
Yeah, it's still in there, I believe.
Except for illness that you may not know that till that morning or day of that you're ill, but I think out of respect for the council as a whole, if you're not going to be able to attend. That you should make that communication with the president or vice president, uh, twenty-four hours in advance.
What about the council spending some money so that we can get some? Program going so that we can get our minutes of our meeting verbatim. Instead of making them have to go listen through all this and summarize it.
But I think Linda, that you're going against state statute there, it doesn't have to be verbatim and it's by the auditor's office.
I know it doesn't have to be, but I think it's. A good thing to do it.
Are we going up, we going to somewhere different now? Okay. All right, I'm going to ring this back in here. So any further discussion on this, uh, how you, let's hear from the council, how you want this to.
Check it out tonight. So we, we have two things, one's just the general rules of the council and then there's also the resolution twenty-three dash eleven and that's just a. If you're going to approve the rules amendments, the resolution then tracks remote policy with. The rules as well, so you can. Take up both tonight, you can table it in January, that's y'all's prerogative, but you can take action on both tonight.
Mister President, I would like to suggest that we take action on both tonight and get this off our agenda, we've been kicking it down the road for a while.
I, I do have a recommendation for one item, three point two. Item three for discussion, length of time the committee is to exist on the ad hoc committee is not to exceed six months. Uh, asked what, I talked with the attorneys and they said it's not state law or anything that requires. Uh, that's six months and I'd like for that to be of discussion that we eliminate that, uh.
I'd like to speak up on that if I can.
I'm just asking for this.
The committee was formed by this president as an ad hoc committee. For the term of six months and as I'm not going to be the president the next time around, I think that ought to be given to the next president. And his appointment should be made. Uh, for that committee and that committee should be reformed at that point in time. And, uh, if we want to right now, we can disband that committee right after this vote, but. I'd like to get, let's get back to this resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven, please.
I think Councilman Deere's question or comment was really not specific for the personnel committee, correct? It's really just a real change. Month limitation, is that what your comment is?
Yeah, my, my comment is, is that it be a standing committee. Uh, and of that discussion tonight, not that committee, any had, any ad hoc committee. At present time, my update for the council on that, the ad hoc committee. Is that this is a, a major undertaking as we all knew when we started it, uh, we're currently in the process of. Uh, arranging for a discussion with a consultant, uh.
Can I get a, a, an opinion from? Counsel about, or not an opinion, but a written statement. That an ad hoc committee can be longer than six months.
We've rapidly put a number together, we've not been able to find as of yet any statute or rule that never required, correct?
I mean, it's not even in our local rule.
It, well, it's, it's in your local bylaws that the council has adopted, so I think Councilman Deere's. I think it's two, two comments, one is just that we want to make an adjustment to y'all's local rules. That would allow an ad hoc committee to last longer than six months, that won't impact the personnel committee necessarily tonight. But I think that's one comment, correct?
Because it's, there's no doubt, because we're at September, October, November, December, we're four months into it.
August is six.
We will continue, look, we've as of yet not found anything that says an ad hoc committee is limited to six months, I think.
Do you disagree with me that the document that I put out? That we were to disband that committee after six months?
No, I don't disagree with that, so again, the personnel committee, you can leave that alone, I think what Councilman Deere is just asking is for the future. Get the rules changed where ad hoc committees can last in, in determinate amount of time.
I disagree with that and that, that's just my opinion, I think an ad hoc committee should just be that, it's ad hoc. And it's not standing, so I think there should be time limitations. So, let's move on, let's move, Ron, let's move on, let's, let's go back to this twenty twenty-three dash eleven, this resolution. And the, and the council.
Well, that's what, that's part of the council rules, and actually good thing, an amendment to. Uh, that do we not have the six-month committee, but it, it, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to go to the. You know, the back door with it as far as fighting it, it's just, you know, we'll have to reinstitute the personnel committee as it currently exists. But in checking with other counties, we did not find that other counties had limitations on their ad hoc committees, is my point. And that they could be disbanded by the council if they felt they were no longer effective or appropriate. But to have an artificial, uh, time limit on it is what I'm suggesting that we change in our council rules, which we're going to vote on tonight by suggestions of all.
The very reason I put it in there for, to be a six-minute limit for, was for this very reason. Was so that it could be considered to change course. If the committee is not doing anything that needs to be done, that needs to be disbanded. And I'm of that opinion right now, that it needs to be disbanded.
Can, can we put a line in there saying subject to? Amendment as needed? Because not every, every situation is going to be different, right? So we need to have the flexibility.
We could do that, I mean, alternatively, you just leave it alone and then at the end of six months, the committee hasn't, you know, whether it's president committee or any other future committee, if it hasn't finished its work, you just reconstitute it.
It's just a matter of an additional vote if you want to keep it going longer, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Good.
Okay. And I don't have it in front of me, but, uh, I approve the resul- or I am requesting approval for resolution twenty twenty-three eleven. Amending the policies by which members of the commu- of the county council may participate in meetings by. By electronic means of communications. And I am, uh, my motion is that it is to be, uh, approved. As presented this evening with the changes that we are, with no changes after discussion. That work?
Do you also want to take up the bylaws change as well tonight?
Correct. How should I make the motion? I don't have it in front of me.
You just. Motion to approve the amendments to the rules of the county council of Johnson County.
Yes, motion to approve the amendments to the rules by Johnson County Council, correct?
Correct.
Motion by Burton.
Second.
Second by dear. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose.
Aye.
Aye. For the reasons you've already heard, so.
Did you catch that, Amy, who are opposed and who are okay? All right, so motion carries. I'm just opposing it because I think. If we're going to require county employees to be here. They cannot zoom in, we should be here.
I agree.
I agree. And let our constituents also vote on this.
And, and the, the point being of the process on electronic signature, who's gonna? How do we, you guys are going to set up how we do electronic signature?
Yeah, okay.
All right, so have I missed anything?
Uh, yes. Uh, committee update, uh, committee is currently, uh, in process of reviewing. Um, last meca- last recommendation that was made by the committee. Uh, Kirsten put together a memo that we sent copies to the councilor, right, on that also. On the instructions for updating, I don't. Okay, um, at the last meeting, uh, there was a consensus that we moved forward with, uh. Asking the department heads and elected officials for updates on any changes in classification, number one. That to prepare in advance for a consultant review, uh, and number two, for any new classifications. Uh, the, uh, we now the sub, we have a subcommittee of the committee. Uh, within having the entire group, uh, meet with the outside counselors, uh, I. During the holidays was very difficult to get hold of and Baker Telly was submit, suggested as a. One of the companies and they, after communications with them, they're not in that particular world right now, I didn't contact NFP. First known as first choice. Finally got a hold of them today, I'm meeting with them virtually tomorrow to discuss. Uh, what it is exactly we're looking for. Uh, then I'm setting up a subsequent meeting with John Dipmer and John Mallards, uh, which is the subcommittee. Uh, to review the, the cost of those, uh, and you'll make presentation to. Uh, the committee and then back to the council, uh, so we're moving forward. Uh, it has been, you know, a challenge, but, uh, if we had. Tremendous cooperation from the elected officials and the, uh. Department heads and we got, uh, all of the seventy-four, uh, revisions, correct? Uh, at the last point, or except maybe for a few, uh, so, you know, everything is moving ahead, just, just moving ahead. At a little slower pace than perhaps, but the, the council, I mean, the committee is, uh. Excited about continuing and, uh, it is going to take us longer than six months, I can, you know, I, I'm not. Hidden that suggestion there wouldn't, uh, and it's not because we're holding our feet to the floor, uh, we are pushing on the gas pedal. And moving forward as quickly as possible. Second item I'd like to bring up is that. We've discussed, uh, as a council, when we're going to have the discussion and I think it's not too late. As we put that in some, I don't want to suggest that we have to wait for a new president to do this, I would like to suggest at our next meeting. That we put on the agenda for, uh, suggestion, the revisions to our budget process. Uh, also as a sub-comment that was made some of the committee meetings and with personal contacts, I have elected officials. And department heads, there is, I haven't found one person that doesn't think, and including our legal staff. That we need to revise our approach to how we do our budgeting calendar and I'd like to begin that discussion. In January, uh, I don't know whether we'd be any opposition to begin the discussion in January, but let's get us going. Uh, and if we have to have a special meeting, then we'll consider that in January, but. I'd like to put it on, I put that on the agenda. I think everybody commented to me personally that, you know, they'd like to see us. Revise the budget process and, uh, let's get it going.
Any further discussions? I'll entertain a motion to dismiss.
I'll make a motion to dismiss.
So, well, I had a, I just thought of a question, so Ron, are you saying that you want? Um. I, I think we all are, are in agreement that we want to revise the process and make it more simple. And not so heavy on those two days, so what are you saying you want?
That we look at a calendar that suggests that we do, for, I give for an example, and I've brought this up personally. Uh, that I've talked with, uh, our Mike Royder, our consultant, and talked with a few other counties about their process. And they put out directions, for example, to the, uh, department heads and local officials to have a preliminary budget. Uh, presented in May, uh, with any new positions, any revisions. To anything that needs to be added of substance, of substance and that we, we make a decision. Uh, for example, my suggestion will be, uh, give you something to shoot at, my suggestion would be that. By June, uh, you know, we have it sent out to them and they put together a preliminary. Preliminary because it's all based upon. Preliminary, because it's all based upon what we can afford to fund as a result of, of the consultant's review. But that we can have discussions and hearings by the middle of, uh, June or first of July. Where we have July and August to talk with all those people, have any suggestions, any meetings that we need to have if they're special. So that's something for you to think about, uh, and I know each one of you have independent suggestions that you might want to add to that, but that gives you a target to shoot at. And I'm not finding any reason why we can't do it legally or procedurally. And that gives, gives any more time, uh, you know.
Any further discussion among? I have a motion to adjourn. Have a second?
Second.
Second. We are adjourned, thank you.